Welcome to FFRS Ask an Atheist on Facebook Live. We're broadcasting from the National Office of the Freedom From Religion Foundation. And winter, as you can see, has finally arrived here in frigid Madison, Wisconsin. And here's a shot of the snowy streets outside of our building. I'm Dan Barker. I'm co-president of the Freedom From Religion Foundation. Our regular studio is still being expanded and remodeled. So we've moved upstairs to the fourth floor where our video director Bruce Johnson has made this temporary set.
I'm Liz Cavell. I'm one of the nine attorneys here at the Freedom From Religion Foundation, working to keep religion and government separate and to educate the public about the views of non-theists. So we had to dig our way through that blizzard weather to get here today. And Dan, you can take off your sherpa gear whenever you're ready.
Warm enough up here now?
Welcome.
I'm Andrew Seidel, FFRF's Director of Strategic Response. And I think today, I'm pretty excited about today's talk. We are going to talk about the Chino Valley School Board and the big state church victory that the Freedom From Religion Foundation had there, about the school board praying. And this was a case that I started working on more than five years ago. If you have questions during today's show, you can ask it right here on Facebook in the comments, or you can send an email to askanatheist@ffrf.org. That's askanatheist@ffrf.org.
So Andrew, you and Rebecca Markert, who's our lead attorney, you've been working on this, did you say, five years?
Five years, yes.
So tell us what happened, before we give the good news, tell us what happened five years ago in Chino Valley, right?
So we got complaints from parents and students, and actually employees in the Chino Valley School District about their school board. The school board was praying at every one of their meetings. They were proselytizing, so they were actually telling people, hey, you should come to Jesus, using the public comment, or excuse me, using their public position to tell that to people during these board meetings. And then they were also reading from the Bible during the board meetings. So the board meetings were really, they were a lot less like a government meeting and more like a church service. And that was partly because this school board had been taken over by the local megachurch, who was pushing both Bible classes and people to run for school board, and really pushing this religious agenda on this community. And the community contacted us and fought back. We eventually had, I think it was 22 different people join the lawsuit as plaintiffs.
Wow.
And we sued.
So California, this is outside of Los Angeles, right? It's not like way out in the boonies somewhere. This is east Los Angeles area, right?
Correct, yeah. It's not that far away from LA, but it was, you know, there were a few great news stories written by an outlet called Reveal News, which does investigative journalism in a way that kind of seems lost today. And they really dug into this connection between the school board and this local megachurch, and what the megachurch was doing to push religion on people using the public school system by capturing the school board essentially.
Yeah, it was essentially dominionist, Christian dominionism, a megachurch really encouraging its members to run for and capture this school board so that they could inject the school board policies and, of course, the school board meetings with their evangelical Christianity. You know, school board prayer is unfortunately not uncommon, but in Chino Valley Unified was the worst of the worst. I mean, when we challenged them for praying, I mean, we aren't kidding, and it was not subtle either. Check out this clip.
What is the gospel? Now I make known to you, brother, in the gospel which I preach to you, which also you received, in which also you stand by, which also you are saved. If you hold fast the word which I preach to you, unless you believe in vain. For I delivered you to you as the first importance would also receive, that Christ died for our sins according to the Scripture, and that he was buried, and that he was raised on the third day according to the Scripture. Now that is the gospel.
So I believe the quicker, the faster we surrender ourselves to God, then we'll find the peace and still find the joy and the mission on this earth. So I would really urge everyone that who does not know Jesus Christ, go find him.
So that's the president of the school board urging people who don't know Jesus Christ to go and find him in the middle of a school board meeting.
So that looks like a church service or a Sunday school class or something, but that's where, who was in the audience? Just regular?
So that was, it was citizens, it was students. So at every one of the school board meetings, right before they did their prayer, or excuse me, right after they did their prayer, they actually had student presentations, they called them. So like a fifth grade choir might perform, the robotics team might show off their latest invention. And there's actually a student member who sits on the school board. So this is, students and citizens are being subjected to prayers, proselytizing, and Bible reading at every single meeting that they went to, which was every single meeting.
Right, right. So we actually worked with a lawyer in Chino Valley named David Calleñáides, who by chance has also two sons that attend school in the Chino Valley School District. He was a great champion in the area and worked on the case almost as long as you have.
No, he told me, Liz, that he pronounces his name Calleñáides.
Calleñáides.
In college, his friends used to say, call if you need us. But we are, he doesn't care how you pronounce it, right?
It's all Greek to us.
As long as the check is spelled correctly, right?
He's a phenomenal attorney, and we actually had him speak at the convention in San Francisco, the FFRF National Convention in San Francisco in November. And I think we have a clip of that that we're going to show.
So we have our lawsuit, federal court. The board wanted to be judged by Jesus. I love this part. They got their wish. United States District Judge Jesús Bernal granted our motion for summary judgment. A motion for summary judgment, for those of you who are not familiar, when there are no dispute of fact, and you don't need a trial, because all the facts are in line and nobody disagrees as to what those material facts are, because trials are about what are the facts? And when all you need to do is apply the law to those facts, you can just ask the judge to determine that. And so we brought our motion for summary judgment, and Judge Jesus agreed, and imposed a permanent injunction against the board.
So he's great, and he's funny, and judge by Jesús, they got their judgment.
And all of the San Francisco convention presentations are now up on the FFRF YouTube page. So you can see David's full talk up there and all the other speakers, with the sole exception of Salman Rushdie, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, he didn't want to be recorded, but, so that means you'll have to come to our next convention today.
That's the benefit of going live and in person. And David also is going to be on the next show of Free Thought Matters. That's FFRF's program that's going to air nationally on February 3rd, and then it will be available on Facebook and on YouTube on February 4th.
That's right. So you've heard us talk about this case before. It's been winding its way through the courts. The school board told its lawyers to go ahead and appeal the Jesús Bernal decision to the Ninth Circuit, who also upheld the injunction against their praying. So we went to appeal at the Ninth Circuit. We won again. And what finally has happened to finalize this case is that the school board has finally come to reason, well, three out of five of them, and decided to cease pursuing appeals. They're not going to appeal this to the U.S. Supreme Court, so they took a final vote last week.
So it's a victory.
Yeah.
It's a victory.
But didn't they first ask for en banc?
So they asked for en banc, and for those of you who don't know, en banc is when, instead of a three-judge panel of the Ninth Circuit, you ask the entire Ninth Circuit to look at the case and decide. So instead of being three judges, it's all the judges. And all the judges on the Ninth Circuit said, no, thank you, we don't need to do that. And so they denied the en banc request, and then the school board just voted saying, nope, we're not going to take this to the Supreme Court. And let's take a look at that clip from the meeting.
And the board took action to rescind the direction given to legal counsel on August 1st, 2018, to file a writ petition to the United States Supreme Court for a review of the Ninth Circuit Court ruling and cease any further litigation in the matter involving the Freedom From Religion Foundation lawsuit. This includes any filing of petitioning for cert with the U.S. Supreme Court on a motion by Irene Hernandez Blair, seconded by Christina Gagne, with a vote of Blair, Schaefer, Gagne voting yes, and Cruz and Nah voting no. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
So Cruz and Nah were the two gentlemen who you saw preaching and proselytizing in the first, the earlier clip that we showed. They still voted to take this to the Supreme Court. But if you notice what the clerk said in that, she said they voted, the board voted to rescind the order to go to the Supreme Court. So back in August, the board actually voted to take this as far as they could. But in November, there was an election, and one of the school board members who was tied to this megachurch lost a seat, and it, the school board flipped. So the only two people who were really left there in favor of these prayers were Cruz and Nah, and the school board voted to not continue pursuing it.
They voted to say nah, nah.
It's a big victory. We're really excited about it.
After a long battle, this case is finally over, and now it is, now we have 16 ongoing lawsuits instead of 17, and we'll finally get, that school board will finally have a permanent injunction in place and can get down to that business of actually running its schools.
Yeah, and one unfortunate for the school board, anyway, postscript is going to be how much they end up having to pay out in attorney's fees and costs, because we're close to, we're over a quarter million dollars in terms of fees and costs. Now, I don't know what the courts are going to order the school board to pay, but it's going to be, it's already more than $200,000 that's been ordered to pay, so whatever.
The school district has to pay.
The school district has to pay.
Right. That's just attorney's fees, just to clarify. It's not any kind of, you know, anybody seeking damages or money or a penalty. It's just the cost of litigating this out in the courts, rather than them just ceasing their unlawful practice, stopping the prayer, you know, five years ago when we asked them to.
When we gave them every opportunity to do so.
So I wanted to ask you, I guess they made their decision in like a closed session before they announced it. Do you think the money was a big part of their decision?
I think the bigger part of the decision was the flipping of the board. Elections really do matter, especially at the local level. And if you're talking about in terms of who's going to impact you more, probably a local school board is going to have a bigger impact on you and your family than, you know, the president. But I think that was the bigger driving force. Once you had only two people who see this as a crusade that Jesus has told them to go on, that really shifted the calculus. And I know that some of the new school board members, and if you listen to the public comment throughout this whole process, the citizens were fed up with the school board. They were fed up with it. They wanted them to get back to the business of teaching their children, not preaching to the public. And so they were really ready for this to end, and they'd been begging the school board to do it for a long time. And I think that was one of the reasons that these people were elected. So indirectly, yes, probably.
So the court told them that they're breaking the law, basically, by doing this. Repeatedly told them they're breaking the law.
At every level, we wanted every level.
So why did they think they could get away with it? What were some of the arguments they were using to try to keep going with school prayer at a secular board meeting?
Right. So unfortunately, the Supreme Court has decided that legislative bodies like the U.S. Congress and local city councils can open their meetings with a ceremonial type of invocation prayer practice. And that was in 2014, I believe, that the Supreme Court said that even sectarian prayers in that type of a practice, you know, an opening prayer practice for meetings, wouldn't violate the Establishment Clause. And that's sort of a carve-out to the general principle that obviously prayer endorsed by government entities shows an endorsement or a preference for religion. And the U.S. Supreme Court sort of was persuaded that that was a historical practice that, you know, the founders were familiar with, and that was compatible with the First Amendment when it was, when the First Amendment was adopted. So anyway, the courts have approved of prayer invocations opening legislative meetings. And the school board has tried to argue that they are like a legislative body. They're like Congress, you know, they're just a deliberative body, you know, making policy, and so their meetings shouldn't be treated any differently. And of course, the courts have always held that when it comes to public schools, public schools are different, and Establishment Clause concerns are heightened when you're talking about public schools and the impact and the access that they have to a captive audience of children.
So is this an example of the camel's nose? The camel's nose is in the tent with the Greece decision. They want to bring more of the camel into the tent, and that's what, they're trying to push Greece to include more than just what the actual case says, huh?
Exactly. And that's the case that Liz is talking about, the 2014 case, Town of Greece. And you're right, that is the camel's nose going under the tent. And this case is whacking that camel's nose and pushing him back.
Well, the nose is still there. I mean, we have Greece, right?
But it's not for, it's no longer applies to school boards, because after Greece, every school board that we wrote to said, hey, no, 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 this Town of Greece case allows us to pray. And we had to point out, no, that principle has never been applied in the public schools. As Liz said, public schools are different, and that includes public school boards. And this case now really is a resounding victory for that principle.
Was ours the first case to test this, a school board?
Ours was the first case to win post-Greece.
So others have tried it, but we had the first clear victory.
That's correct.
That's right. And I mean, I think it's important to talk about, you know, not just what's the Establishment Clause and where are the boundaries, but kind of going back to Dan's question of like, why did the school board finally decide to stop? You know, what influenced their decision? I think, you know, it's important, and you didn't see it in those videos, but what was being pushed at those meetings? Not just religion, and not just even Bible reading Christianity, but, you know, one church's particular brand of conservative Christianity. And we had 22 plaintiffs in this case, and that's not, that's not typical for us.
And some of our named plaintiffs were Christian, too.
Right. The point is that, you know, it wasn't just what you saw in those clips, which is Jesus died for you, and, you know, that's sectarian enough of a message and divisive enough, but it was, you know, homosexuality is a sin, and, you know, transgender bathrooms are, you know, an abomination, and all this stuff that really is just harmful and isolating to kids in the public school district. And I think that's why people in the district were fed up with it, parents and community members, who are saying, this is not what we want our public schools, what our public school board to espouse, and this is not, this doesn't represent our values, and it's no place of the school board to, you know, to sort of endorse one specific conservative brand of Christianity and tell all, you know, tell so many students that you don't belong.
And imagine how those plaintiffs and citizens felt sitting in that meeting, if you were Jewish, for example, not just atheism and agnosticism, or if you were of some other, if you were Roman Catholic, and here's this evangelical megachurch coming in controlling.
Absolutely. It's if you're not this conservative brand of Christianity, you don't belong. And that's just wrong, you know?
And if you Google Andrew Cruz, who is one of the stalwarts on the board for this church, and you can see some of the other things that he has said and done. He's abusing his public office to promote this, this particular brand of Christianity. I mean, at that same meeting, he actually told parents to go with their gut when it comes to vaccinating their children, because vaccines cause autism. He is repeatedly pushing all kinds of these extreme views that are espoused by his church, and he's using his public office to do it. And yeah, the people were absolutely fed up with it.
Were they enjoined in the meantime? Did they, did they have to stop back at the beginning?
Yes.
So there hasn't been anything up till now?
There have been, there have been no prayers. They tried to sneak a couple in during public comment period, but that's, that seems to have stopped.
So this is a clear victory for not just reason, but the Constitution and the principles. That's what we fight for at FFRF.
And the people, and those.
And plurality, you know, and public schools. And public schools should be secular, because they exist to educate all of our children, not all of whom are conservative Christians, or, you know, many of our kids are really alienated by some of these views. Kids are gay, kids are transgender, kids are atheists, kids are Jews, and there's no reason why our public schools should be preaching orthodoxy that makes, you know, half of our kids or more feel like they don't belong.
And this is a good point, this is a good time to point out, that one of the reasons we have a separation of state and church is because religion is so divisive. And if you, if the government does not take a position on religion, it helps unify a country. And I don't know if you've heard, but we're kind of a divided nation right now. You know, it's, it's one way to avoid that division is by keeping the government neutral when it comes to matters of religion.
So this is a good victory. The school board decided not to ask the Supreme Court, so that pretty much settles it.
It does, and it's a huge victory, because it applies to the whole Ninth Circuit, which is California, Oregon, Washington, Hawaii, Alaska. It's a huge section of the country. I don't remember the percentage of the population that falls under there, but it's enormous as well. And it also, again, stops the spread of that bad Town of Greece decision, at least stops it from allowing other school boards to pray.
So should we go to questions, or do you want to?
Yeah, I think we should see if we have any questions online.
Let's see if we have any questions on this topic.
Lauren is managing the Facebook page for us, and sends them to the iPad here, and then we'll see if we've got anything.
Okay, well, here's an easy one. Jen Prince says, taxpayers are footing the bill because these people couldn't pray in private. Didn't Jesus say something about how praying to prove a point is hypocritical? And of course, we know she's referring to the Bible, which apparently didn't get read before the Chino Valley School Board meetings, this particular.
Yeah, it's Matthew 6:5, I think, right? It's part of Jesus' Sermon on the Mount.
Where he says, "Don't be like the hypocrites who like to stand up publicly to pray." Jesus told in the Sermon on the Mount, "When you pray, enter into your closet and pray to your Father secretly, and he'll hear your prayers," right? So why didn't they read that verse at the?
Yeah, that wasn't part of the dominionist.
It goes to what you're saying, too, which you're talking about, you know, they're pushing this brand of Christianity, which ignores Jesus' Sermon on the Mount, at least that part of it. But some of our plaintiffs, they were upset that Christianity was using, being used as a political weapon, and did read that particular part of the Sermon on the Mount, and thought that it was something that they should be following.
Right, right. Okay. Here's a question from Cody Reed, just generally about our litigation. How often do you actually file lawsuits, and how often do you win slash lose cases? We can kind of speak to that, although, of course, it's always changing.
It is. It's, right now, the last time I looked, anyway, I haven't done the math recently, but when I last looked, we were 15 and 2. So 15 wins, 2 losses since January 1st, 2016.
So in two years.
Yeah, and that's, that's obviously shifting the 2 losses were, or are on appeal. A bunch of the wins are on appeal, but that includes cases that we've actually filed in court and then have either been decided favorably for us or settled favorably for us.
And I think part of that is because of the answer to the second question, which is how often do we file lawsuits? And that's only as often as is necessary. I mean, we, we write, you know, usually around 1,000 legal letters a year to government bodies, basically trying to persuade through education and advocacy, trying to persuade government bodies, school boards, and others to do the right thing, to remain neutral towards religion, to stop whatever it is they're doing that's endorsing religion. And we do have a lot of success just persuading through advocacy and education. I think last year, around.
350, I think.
Yeah, around a third of those letters resulted in just resolution.
So I think that's amazing. It's important to go to court, but that's time-consuming and expensive. Look at the money in the five years with this one case, right?
Right, right.
But with over 300 letters that you guys sent out last year, it was solved without going to court. Any one of those could have been an issue that we might have gone to court on. And Chino Hills, Chino Valley, what do you call it?
Chino Valley.
They, they could have gotten our letter and said, okay, we're going to stop doing this. Of course, they didn't.
Right.
But that's a perfect example, because, you know, we don't want, I don't want to drag a public school district into court. I don't want them to have to spend $300,000 on a lawsuit. I'd rather them spend that on science education. But if they're going to violate the rights of their students, then they're going to have to pay that, and we are going to take them to court. But we give them every opportunity. I mean, I sent many, many letters and had quite a few conversations with the attorney for that school district before this case actually got filed, and they refused at every turn to do the clearly correct and legally correct thing, and instead decided, nope, we're going to keep violating the rights of students.
Do you think they're paying the fees, or their insurance company? Do you know about that?
Often, the insurance company will pay a chunk of it, but given the clear precedent in this case, it's, insurance companies often say, no, we are not going to go past this X amount. And we know that the church was fundraising to allow, and they said they were going to give the money to the school district for this appeal. They claim to have raised more than $200,000. I don't think that's the case, and I'd be curious to see whether the school district ever sees a penny of that.
Yeah, well, of course, with like crisis in public school funding and teacher salaries and resources, this is just not the way to be spending public school resources, but elections matter. So this is the final question. It is from Joseph Couch. Is there a solution to get rid of prayers in legislative bodies across the country? So we mentioned, of course, the really bad case on this issue, which is Town of Greece versus Galloway. We're kind of stuck with that right now, but what are some of the strategies?
Yeah, and that builds on the Marsh decision from 1983. There's probably not a legal solution, and hi, Joe. It's more going to be a question of inclusion. So for instance, when Dan Barker asked to give a prayer before the U.S. House of Representatives, the chaplain refused that request.
A secular prayer.
A secular invocation. He said, you can't give a secular prayer because you're an atheist, and said, no atheist allowed, basically. And that goes against a lot of the language in the Town of Greece decision. So we sued on your behalf to be able to give this secular invocation before the House of Representatives opens, and we're awaiting a decision on that case. So seeking inclusion is one strategy.
Right, right. And yeah, that's a case, that's one of our open lawsuits right now. So we're, we're litigating around.
Technically, that's one of the losses that we're technically appealing.
Yeah, good point. So.
We're waiting to hear on that, right?
Correct.
You did the oral arguments, and now we're just waiting for the three judges to make a.
The three judge panel to make a decision, yeah.
Yeah, we'll see. There's actually one really final, final question, and I'm going to read this, because I think this is.
Let me, can I just, one more thing on Joe Couch's question?
Yeah.
Just, there's also, there's no real reason to have the prayers, right? It's just, it's just the legislature getting together and saying, hey, we're going to have these prayers.
Yeah, that's a good point. Let's point out, just because the Supreme Court said it doesn't offend the Establishment Clause, doesn't mean you elected officials have to pray at your meetings. You could also instead just get down to the business of secular governance.
And the chaplains in Congress who say these prayers, and actually, they hire out, they allow volunteers to come in and give the prayers 40% of the time. So they don't even say all the prayers they're supposed to. Their only job is to say a prayer, and they get paid, the chaplain, the budget for the two chaplains' offices is $800,000 a year. Their salaries are equivalent with the chief law officer, the chief information officers of NASA, of the Army. They make $150,000 to $180,000, and their only job, under the House and Senate rules, is to go in and say a prayer before they have a session.
And they have staff, too.
And they have a couple, two, three staffers.
Paid staff to do that, yeah.
And that's, that's all their job is. So $800,000 for those prayers. So if you think that's silly or a waste of money, you ought to be writing your legislators and telling them, hey, why don't you go ahead and forego this? It's not, not required.
Yeah.
Sorry, final question.
Right, final, final question, and this is back to the Chino Valley School Board. Giselle Zimmerman asks, what happens if they start praying again at those school board meetings?
Good question.
That is a good question.
So there is an injunction in place, so if you violate a court injunction, it's no longer a question of the Constitution or the First Amendment. You are now violating a court order, and courts really don't take kindly to that. So that, that, you would be held in contempt of court. They would have to pay fines. They could theoretically go to jail if they did this.
Personally, they'd be personally liable then?
It would depend on the judge, but yes, the judges, because then it's an issue of the authority of the court, and courts do not like their authority to be questioned, especially in that manner. So that would be, that'd be an interesting.
So if somebody like Cruz went ahead and did it, he'd also be violating the district's policy as well, right?
He would, because they did change policy.
So he would be personally, I would think, liable.
Maybe, maybe. It would depend. And the school board would also have recourse to possibly remove him, which would be an interesting, interesting turn of events, too. So, yeah, I don't know if that'll happen. These gentlemen, Nah and Cruz, do see themselves as warriors for Jesus, and they do see themselves as on a crusade, so they might do something crazy like that. But again, there's a whole group of people who are really done with this in that school district. So if they do, we'll find out about it, and then the court will find out about it, and we'll see what happens.
Right, yeah. A really positive end, though, to a long and wasteful but necessary battle.
And hard fought, on our end at least, so.
Well, that is our show for today, and thank you for watching. We invite you to please become a member of FFRF and help us in our vital work to keep state and church separate.
Support our cases like this.
Yes, and to educate the public about the views of non-theists. Visit our webpage at FFRF.org, phone us at 800-335-4021 to learn more about becoming a member.
And one way that you can actually help FFRF is by contacting your government officials who are violating or contemplating violating the law. So if you want to receive FFRF action alerts, write on your smartphone, text FFRF, those four letters, to 52886. So you text FFRF to 52886, and then you'll be prompted to put in your address and stuff so we know who your legislators are. And then you'll be signed up for action alerts, and you'll be in the know. So that's going to do it.
Well, thank you for watching Ask an Atheist on FFRF's Facebook Live channel, and...
We're off for the next couple of weeks.
Are we off for the next couple of weeks?
Yep.
Because of the studio going...
Oh, because the studio's being remodeled. But you can come back again in February for our next live episode of FFRF's Ask an Atheist.